I'm glad my wills are proud of who's here. Thanks for that opportunity to be here today. I want to break everyone in and I pray for our town, our nation. And I pray for the people that have sick or deceased.
Amen.
We're calling Mike's absent. Approve the minutes from April fifteenth, two thousand point four public meeting. Move by Kip. Thank you by Willis. All far. Aye. No food. Approve the minutes from April thirtieth, two thousand point four special meeting. Move by Kip. Say goodbye Willis. Anybody question? Not all far? No food? I got it. Attorney report council consider authorizing American entity to a inner government. Who hired a government for garbage and trash collection? Move by Lacy.
Second.
Say goodbye Jordan. Any other questions? Now we're going on Jordan.
Aye.
Kip. All right Willis.
Right.
Lacy.
Hi.
Mike absent. Eyes have it. Council consider authorize American service. Surf捞 jump. The old two. The two old population tanks. We pay to begin at four hundred dollars each. I like to advertise.
May I? I just want to. That um that actual like language of motion needs to say. But it be dedicated as surf coast and no longer um can no longer be used for public purpose. I just want to make sure that's. Like I was motioning.
Do we need to reride it before we?
No, just as long as that is a minute.
Okay. So need a motion if you have a group. Move by Willis. Say goodbye Kip. Any question? We're going on Jordan. Aye. Kip. Uh Willis.
Aye.
Lacy.
Um.
Mike absent. Eyes have it. All right. Building for a majority of justice various requests about for a passing Jeremy at twenty three oh eight. South by Drive. Mr. Rome, we have a report for me to meet.
Yes, sir, we do. Uh as a board, we met and. We do not approve the forty five yard variance. Uh would approve of five yard variance on both sides. The lot is only thirty five foot wide. And they're building a house that's thirty foot wide. And uh you only got two and a half on the side. They still got that whole line. Um as a board, uh we decided not to talk to the county engineer. He's also in favor of not giving it to them. Uh if it would consider maybe, I mean, she's got a hundred and thirty six feet wide. She would maybe give it a twenty four by forty. Still get the same square footage, but. John seemed to think that it's a restore as we're doing the house. And I'm sure they got certain plans that they do. I mean, and we we consider, uh you know, since they're just a street on one side and empty lot, but.
Okay.
Uh we did have thirty gates in one lane as a whole.
All right. Good. Thank you, Mike, for your report.
It's she got a house. It's a shopping house. What building are you restoring?
I heard restored. Yeah, it's a store. They got different ones. You know, it's invited. And that's probably why I sustain all of it. Yeah, that's what we think. But I mean, she's just a lot of property. I mean, and as a board, you have to help.
Okay, uh any further to speak to by this council? If not, we need a motion to accept the recommendation of committee. Move by Willis.
Thank you.
Say goodbye Kip. Any further discussion? We'll vote on it, Jordan.
Hey.
Kip.
Aye.
Willis.
Aye.
Lacy.
Hi.
Mike's absent. Eyes have it when they. Okay. Uh project status report? Mr. Clay Lawrence is not here tonight. I believe I asked, uh nothing has changed too much on the agenda?
Not a sample you would need to um discuss.
Okay. I'd like to defer. The uh engineer report, all of them are seven, either of them is seven. Move by Lacy.
Second.
Say goodbye Kip. Any questions? We're going on Jordan. Aye. Kip. Uh Willis. Lacy.
Hi.
Mike's absent. Eyes have it. Okay. Capital outlay. On more and Alice uh Alice area during the company disruptive plans came in. Back too close. Too close. Unfortunately, I will need discussing all the options. Council to consider authorize G I S to search for our surging to on the ditch. That border the town line near on more street on behalf of the town.
Also, we will do that for our G I S.
What you mean by Willis?
Thank you.
Say goodbye Kip. Any further discussion? Any questions? Now we're going on Jordan.
Aye.
Kip.
Aye.
Willis.
Aye.
Lacy. Mike's absent. Absent. Eyes have it. Okay, we go to attorney report. You ready?
Um. So on fifteen oh four South Body Drive, a wall three gaming property. I believe, uh go correct me if I'm wrong, but I was informed that they're making progress at that location. That um some progress is being made. However, it is not up for a little actual review until next week. So it's just kind of a little bit of a mandate. Um number two, council to discuss the possibility of Tommy Lane being turned back to the town. I'm gonna be honest, we're really just at the point of we've informed Mr. Mark that. We can't move forward until he pays the G I S bill and signs their contract. Uh for the survey for the drainage survey. And until he does that, the town, I Bryce and I are the opinion that the town should not be footing the bill. To give him that per that benefit and that if he wants to do it, then him and his family. And the other owners of Tommy Lane. Pay the bill of G I S. So we make that clear together. So I don't know if anybody knows Minister Shan, even they can reach back out to him. But yeah.
My sister uh spoke this on last week. He's gone uh by the hands for a wedding, um with a direction across the street that I might reach out to Mark, see if you want to.
Okay. Um number three, attorney to draft a policy to be added to the technical, the federal policies and procedures. It's my understanding that the committee was fine. Well, it's my understanding that we were okay with the grievance policy and the household retirement policy. Something.
Uh the doors locked.
The doors locked?
No, you can open it.
Oh. I believe that the grievance policy and the household retirement policy that I gave you all like. That y'all were, he's never voted on it, but I provided it to y'all previously. The communications policy, the committee that um and we were able to discuss. Uh the chief was present, Tracy was present. And the committee members are just going through what the policy would potentially entail. Um that we opted to just tail it for now. Um because the door may have satisfied or remained some of the issues that were taking place. Um and so that's just the committee's recommendation to the council that we could just table it for now. Remove it from the agenda. That unless maybe that issues are on the future, that we all kind of know what direction that issue would be heading in.
And we're, we table it, if we need to, we get ready off the table in time.
Yeah.
We can pull that off. That's kind of what we just do.
Right, and everyone was kind of on the same page about not handing the town over. We need to just serve the people and really just trying to put their best foot forward. And um so if the if the council agrees with all the ready there. Of the vote or whether y'all agree with the recommendation and whether it can be removed from the agenda.
Need a motion?
Move.
Move by Willis. Say goodbye Jordan.
I refuse no motion. Through.
Uh the communications policy that that would be tangled and removed from the agenda.
And if we have a deal, we can.
Any questions from the council? Any questions, audience? Now we're going on Jordan. Aye. Kip. Aye. Willis.
Aye.
Lacy.
Hi.
Mike's absent. Eyes have it. Forty three.
Okay, and then in terms of the grievance policy that we had given y'all in the household retirement policy, I don't know if y'all had. An opportunity to review those or you don't want to actually vote on that next meeting? Um just because the committee met about the communications policy that wasn't really something that we.
We didn't digest it and put it in.
So yeah, Tracy, if you don't mind, if you put the grievance policy and the household retirement policy on our next meeting's agenda. And guys, what I could do is just to refresh your memories. I can email it to you again. So we can look at it.
Please.
Yeah. Um the bid packet for demolition of condensed buildings. Bryce and I have this drafted and I'm also gonna email that to y'all um this evening so that you can review. Kind of have our final draft. And I were just kind of reading some of the terms. We thanks to I reused the parish one as a guide. But we were kind of looking at some of the hoops they were making the contractors jump through. Um and really seeing if those are requirements of the law or if those are just things the parish would require because they wanted to. And a lot of their responses were, well, that's what terrible marriage does, so that's why we do it. And so that's not really good of them answer. So Bryce and I kind of tailored our big packet a little bit better to the jobs that we have here in the town and try to keep the work as vocal as possible. So I'm gonna email that over to y'all this evening.
The thing, the thing with me. Is where they get rid of this debris, they need to give a document. So they get rid of it out of place they can take, I'm catching catching the feedback from the buyer. Some people are jumping trying, a lot of people probably. That's intimidating.
Some of the job we in our big packet we have that they have to give us a um a disposal.
I did read that.
A certification. Right, yeah, I wanted to make sure because I knew that was the conservative yours. To make sure that that's something that's covered. Um and so, yeah, I want to do what we have that for.
Because I'm having some issue with them picking up some of the debris.
Right. Um but now we don't want to be, but it's been us between those people that is carrying on the problem. Right, no, we just speak to the people who pay for it.
Yeah, they pay, yeah, they do pay for it.
But I mean, they need to under, and and the big packet will be clear that the cost associated with the disposal. It's gonna be reflected in our bids. They shouldn't be able to say, hey, we bidding this much for the disposal, they're gonna want to dispose them and we bill them.
Make sure they understand that and they read it back.
Yeah. Uh and then number five, a ver- a agreement ordinance um for the council to review. I think that we have one in the actual in your binders. And y'all, it really mirrors the civil service uh agreement policy. We just, in our timesheets, they say reference our policy or agreement. And then we don't have a policy on agreement. So this is kind of just really a C Y A like for us to have in our policy angle. And it's like, what paid time off as an employee have uh part of debt in a in a payment? And just to make sure that everybody's being treated equally and. Uh like I said, when I worked for the parish, they have the agreement policy with the civil service board. Um and so guys, if y'all have any uh feedback or any complications you think need to be made to that. But I'll be through it, give Bryce my some feedback, we'd be glad to make any changes. And then kudos to Tracy for dropping the targets. Cause it looks really good.
I'm just getting through a good job.
She did awesome.
It's too big, trust.
It's too big.
Yeah, if they meet the family criteria, which includes like in-laws, grandparents, children, obviously spouses. Um so I don't, I think the ordinance, obviously, that's lots of them.
Well, you would have to introduce it tonight and you'll have to have a public hearing at the next meeting if we're able to introduce it tonight.
Okay, so guys, I would ask that we introduce it tonight so that we can have a public hearing at the next meeting. And then at the public hearing, if y'all think any modifications need to be made, we can discuss it at that time.
Move by Lacy.
I'll second that.
Say goodbye Kip. Any further question? Now we're going on Jordan. Aye. Kip. Uh Willis.
Aye.
Lacy.
Hi.
Mike. Eyes have it. All right, Jordan, thank you for the report.
Mayor, there's one I wanted to mention, like some one of John's project, is that okay? Is it okay?
Yes.
Okay. Uh so we're basically have finally made contact with apparently uh surging stores utilities are a rare thing. That's why we're getting unfrazled for surging stores for utilities is not something that all of us are supposed to do. So we finally made contact with the Sherry. I just want to let y'all know, we followed up with her yesterday. She received the map. She was going out. She told me that she should pass that to the end of the meeting. Just keeping y'all updated on that.
Move on with. Thank you, Chris. Right.
He can send it for the next meeting at six thirty, six forty five.
Did uh. Didn't take long. Slide is applicable.
I can motion please.
Move by Lacy.
I'll say that.
Kip. We're going on it, Jordan.
Aye.
Kip. Uh Willis. Lacy. Mike's absent. Eyes have it. The chief.
Update on speed hunt. The sheriff, they're set Washington and Bursing. The sheriff's office yet to give me the paperwork. Um we're gonna do their set once the bridge is open. That would be the last street that we have to do. The dash cameras are still expected to show up sometime this month. Uh we have another meeting in the next couple of days with the people from Axon to see how it's gonna work. Or or what stage we're at of this. Sheriff's office did put a speed reader stop on uh actually North White Drive. They put it, it says the limit fifteen school zone. That's all I said, that's not the word I was looking for, but at least they have something there flashing, so fifteen miles an hour is good. But for the school zone. I was wondering if we could take this off the agenda?
Need a motion?
Probably.
Move by Willis.
Second.
Say goodbye Jordan. Any further question? We're going on Jordan. Aye. Kip. Uh Willis. Lacy.
Hi.
Police employment benefits to be discussed in committee with Lacey and Mike. Uh we did meet. And it's uh although we'd love to provide the benefit, the financial cost is too great at this time. Request removal from DJ.
Need a motion?
I will.
Move by Lacy.
Thank you.
Say goodbye Kip. Any question? Now we're going on Jordan.
Aye.
Kip.
Aye.
Willis.
Aye.
Lacy.
Hi.
Mike's absent. Eyes have it. All right, chief, that's all you got?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Free report.
Well, I hate to comment on that. So we did have a great discussion. It's not something that the town just can't financially support that at the time. So I mean, yeah, it'd be a great benefit, but it's just, it's not financial.
Well, that's good. I had compared it to chicken.
All right, thank you.
Um. Uh chief, remember all right, I did complain on that van car. Uh between true value and industry.
Yes.
Windows are broken, broken out of it and all now, now would it be whatever.
So.
Your theory is a lot better.
With with gate passing. That whole property and everything right there is gonna be slowly cleaned up.
Yeah.
It's one of the things that I have the van, I have a possible owner for the car. So we're gonna wind up getting either we're gonna tow it or the landowners, they're gonna have it towed because they get the whole property clean. Right now, I'm dealing with.
Aye.
Three different people that say they own this, this one says they own that, the people have been scrapping stuff, so. We've been uh we've been watching that on the air, so that's part of the process.
And like I said, like I noticed the wind as well.
Yeah, when it's got shots.
Obviously, it would be whatever they broke the main, just whatever they have of it.
I was uh I know we're done now.
I got it. And you know, when it was Friday night against the accident on the poorly, I mean. And believe I might just say it here because one son's backyard, neighbor's son's backyard. Where do you know, where do you want to call it? The dog, I don't know, never. I mean, you go about sending the dates with the somebody passing the way you follow. But something major like that, maybe you could include it in that?
If I would have been notified about it, I would have included y'all in it.
I got it.
And I have anybody to work Friday night, the sheriff's office is the one at work. So when the accident happened, I wasn't notified till like ten o'clock the next day.
But I'm getting that, you know, I mean, I'll tell them all about it the next morning. You know, I'm saying it's just.
I do not notify officers, smaller than actually has the power to know about it. You would have gotten the text that night.
Okay.
So we have the one on duty the next?
We sheriff's office covered the place that have anybody on duty that that Friday night. Public police couldn't cover. They they were uh that's one of the days they couldn't fail. And Kevin just couldn't couldn't make that night. Needed to go to wherever he needed to go.
Okay, sorry.
He needed a weekday.
Okay, you good? Then we'll move forward. Hope this is already nine repair project number six, seven, three, two, one, nine population station. Tanks installed. Uh two tank were installed completely. Requested move removed from the agenda.
Move.
Move by Kip.
Thank you.
Say goodbye Willis. Any question? Now we're going on Jordan.
Aye.
Kip.
Aye.
Willis. Lacy.
Hi.
Mike's absent. Eyes have it. The following project has been obligated to receive funding within a within within a work completed deadline. All right. February. Two thousand twenty five. Project bid award to powerhouse for the pump behind Lou Gehring in the amount of six thousand three hundred eighty dollars. The flood gave at the port in the amount of four thousand six hundred dollars with the work being completed in the six two twenty four. We electrical box at the pump station bid with award to powerhouse in the amount of nine thousand one hundred forty dollars. Where the work to be completed on the six two twenty four. Street cost design bid award to powerhouse in the amount of forty two thousand five hundred fifty two dollars with the work to be completed. Nolated in the six eight twenty four. Public station equipment shed bid award to powerhouse in the amount of forty two thousand nine hundred dollars with work to be completed. Nolated in the six two four twenty four. Lift station sewer plant. All four bids June on the fifth, the sixth, twenty four. That be here?
Yes.
That's just, they all separate or?
They all separate. So here's.
All right.
One lift station. This is sealed envelope, but it has envelopes in for each project in the envelope.
Easy. Only to bring it in. Probably use that. Thank you.
Which one? The lift station. He did a, he did each lift station that's on the bid. You know, it's south plant. Come home. These are all lift station and sewer plant bids.
So. Yeah.
That's all the bids that I have one.
Yeah, that I got up to go on. Yeah.
All right. I'll see the bids. This is, this is a safety show, we don't show it on first. We should have constructed development policy, cost estimate to the repair on various sites. Town will go but according to the information given by us by Brandon with salsa food in the town of Oklahoma. Called the hurricane island. Lift stations, sewer plants, labor material equipment. One hundred and thirty three thousand nine hundred dollars. Will be able to start within ten days of this note proceeding. All right. Should start.
Break it up the package.
Okay, if you didn't.
Yes, sir, your mic's on that.
No, that's a bird.
We would war lift stations. Wooden fence and gate. Six thousand one hundred dollars.
Move the company.
Oh powerhouse, I'm sorry, Mike. Thank you.
What do you think? You're gonna have to prove the uh the rules right there.
Power house. Saint Louis lift station fence and pumping house. Seven thousand two hundred dollars. Power house. Before this station and fence, twelve thousand dollars. Twelve what? Twelve thousand nine. Power stereo streamer station fence and hose, six thousand three hundred fifty dollars. Power house, sell out of the war lift station, including shared in like three thousand six hundred fifty dollars. Power house, sewage, top sewage plant. He didn't get it on.
So what happens with that?
Three.
Sherry, what happens with that? He was a little weird on that.
One item.
I mean, it's a minor slot, it's the pattern slot that goes to that hole. We that I made packet that we gave was for all of them. I would suggest that it would be all responded. So power house did fail one of the.
So.
Four. Four. Our sewage body didn't get it on.
Okay.
All street lift station, four thousand three hundred dollars. Power house, Cali leads lift station, three thousand four hundred fifty dollars. Avenue E, lift lift station wood fence, six thousand two hundred forty dollars. All bid. Just gonna try that on this.
This is powerhouse is total forty five thousand. Doesn't have the north and the south.
Would you give up?
Forty five five.
Forty five eight two.
Yeah.
All right. Like the former committee.
Yeah.
And how do you be part of committee? See how we handle this?
He's the owner dinner. No, we have kissy a local beer.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. And what that compares to?
Hundred thirteen thousand to forty five thousand.
Thirty three thousand.
Thirty nine, so forty.
Forty five, forty five.
Forty five eight three.
Three.
The north and the south sewer plants as the ones he did not beat on. What were?
I think the north plant was done.
There's a few things, a few things left um at the north plant, the south plant. There's a few things, a few things left, um, at the north plant, the south plant.
I'd say the committee could do it.
Right, yeah, if you want to open to the council members and the advice on the committee.
Like you said, they see you and here on it?
Yes.
The, which is the council, is that right?
I don't know that is.
Motion?
Move.
Move back here. Second about these. Any further question?
Who does the meeting right now?
Will, Will on a journey, ah, here.
Ah.
Willis. Please.
China.
Mike.
Looking for my date.
Alright. Just, I'll work that through myself.
Could be, who should make my date?
I don't think, but I'm really sure. Everything I give thirteen, I'm good.
After like, after like, so if we could do that.
Whatever, however.
We'll check with the chairman, it's my main point.
I'm making my offer, then.
Thank you. The people, for our vote, uh, I'll forbid June, the sixth.
You missed town hall and fuel canopies.
Yes.
Yeah.
Town hall fuel canopy, I'll forbid June today.
So we have Kissio and the two from powerhouse. I mean, I'm not saying like, but I like, I'm not understanding field, but I kind of like how you know where how much each individual thing was in the cost with powerhouse, whereas KPL is one of the big ups, so you don't know where how they just finished their cost for this thing. So what did the package say? Their package say they do.
Too late for that, too old. I'll do this day.
Few repair for Hurricane Island, or a few canopies repaired. Town, uh. We should have constructed development, cost estimate to be repaired on various sites of the town hall, according to the information given by us by Brandon and the social group in town hall of metal called Hurricane Island. Town hall and fuel canopy repaired, labor material forty-nine thousand four hundred fifty dollars. Powerhouse. Show them this up. Powerhouse, fuel wing, fuel canopy, eight thousand three hundred dollars. Powerhouse, town hall repair, twenty-one thousand six hundred dollars. So, cool.
Maybe three hundred and twenty-one six. Twenty-nine nine.
What you got?
Twenty-nine nine, I forgot. Twenty-nine thousand nine hundred.
Are you in now? Alright, Kim, shall we?
Wow, we'll be ticked a little bit.
Alright, we should meet back here, take the root beer.
Okay.
There's my Willis, any further discussion? Will, Will on a journey, alright, Kim.
Aye.
Willis, please.
Aye.
Mike's out, Mike's out. Okay, project number seven one five zero three three, we be, for our vote, I'll forbid the day. We should have a struggle.
If you're on that, I guess.
Okay. We should have the judgment, development policy, cost estimate to repair various, uh, sites and towns, according to the information from Brandon, social group. Our current vote, thirty-four thousand two hundred dollars. Okay, this one's from Jordan today, let's see. Let's just wanna straighten out. Very conservative guy. Okay, uh, labor material, to repair both, twenty-nine thousand three hundred sixty-eight dollars. Do we choose the council?
Not one of those.
Yeah, alright.
That, just so y'all are aware, that it's a little more than what FEMA has granted us for the project.
Like how much?
So FEMA awarded for that project, twenty-seven thousand forty-six dollars, so it's close, but.
I'm gonna have, I'll do that. FEMA, FEMA doesn't, uh, adjust anything, we're gonna try.
I'm pretty sure they do.
You have to correct a little bit, I'm pretty sure. I'll give it a shot.
I know, we try, I'll give this four one to get it.
We give it a shot. Okay, any questions, the council, anybody know? Say that, Will on a journey? We need a motion.
I need a motion.
Will, Will about these?
I'll say, if we think you're on this. It'll say.
Here. Will on a journey, ah, here.
Ah, Willis, please.
Mike. Down. I have. Christmas lights inventory ordered received, request to move from the agenda. Move back Willis. Second. Any further question? Now with Will and Jordan.
Aye.
Here.
Aye.
Willis, please.
Aye.
Mike, Mike's out, I have that. Randy, Randy can add the debris rule, I'll forbid June tonight. Here, we have a major. Our level contractors, you will. Est, our limit concrete, forty-eight thousand dollars. Remove debris from the two mile up canal. Long reach excavator moving to a trail again, into a dump, a dump canal to approve.
How much?
Over two miles? Forty-eight. Over forty-eight miles?
Two miles.
Coming on forty, uh, uh, forty, forty-eight, seventy-eight.
Two miles from the pump station, that way?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright. For the pump, the.
For the pump there for.
Next, the salt team don't need it.
Don't need it? No.
A little bit passive, but you know, the drinks can have, maybe they should guys. I'm sorry.
Did the whole thing.
I'm sorry.
It was taking out everything, out the whole canal. So that's just two miles.
Two miles of canal, so yes.
From the door to that way, where they always, two miles past the pump station?
From the pump station, it took, uh, memo.
That was memo.
You don't want to do it after you read that, we can discuss. I mean, that's, that's.
What is it?
Oh, it's your view?
Oh, you have two bills?
Well, I see that's yours. Actually, that's yours?
That's what I was gonna question, how, how? How you know what was there? That survey was taken?
Yeah.
They set it down, they taste what's exactly.
If, 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 every point of debris, I need to see.
They set it down, uh.
They got GPS boards and every piece of brand, you got it.
Yeah. And there, there was another question I had too, I'm not having that time. It was, it was voted on, two meetings, they go, they gave it to the bidder. And it was approved, the bidder got it, and then the next meeting, the mayor asked the.
What?
Yeah, you, y'all, y'all approved the bidder.
We approved the bidder.
We did support the bidder.
I would have to look back, y'all, and I don't think.
Yeah, y'all approved it, the only thing they had, completely, the one, last meeting, you asked, it was too much. Not an accurate, poor, not a lot, no.
Well, I think they realized that the bid wasn't responsive to the actual, like, um, the bid specifications.
It's okay to do that, we can now expose, but they got a bid, but we have a bid.
Yeah, no, we talked about it, yeah, I believe it was spoken with, with the, the bidder, he indicated that he thought that gorge was needed, I don't think that he had.
It still may be, I mean, you don't know.
Well, no, that, there are specifications in the bid packet that say exactly what equipment can be used, where the equipment has to be, where the staging has to be, so a gorge couldn't be part of the bid.
With north of the, how you gonna, how you gonna get escalated north of the bridge, from the mountain bridge, like? How you gonna get escalated in a phone?
That's a God rag.
So you're gonna have to have a gorge.
Probably not, if you got a whole reef estab, then, how you, where you gonna estab it?
Just to tell you, you would have to read how exactly, like FEMA.
Some of the area you can't do the estab.
Well.
It seems like a tree, you know?
Okay, Travis Harrison, remove all debris and said rains canal, the, definitely not the canal, remove all debris vegetable in the canal. All the GPOB, all of the, not contract. Eighty-four thousand dollars.
A minute?
Eighty-four.
So.
That's the whole canal, or just two miles of the canal, the other guy?
We were just saying how to do this.
Because I'm, 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 I'm changing because between the whole canal.
I'm not pulling.
That's just two miles of, you know what I mean?
It was like there, it was just.
Well, that's.
I just see it with you, with you, uh, revise.
It's just two miles. It's about. You come the northern, the northern, like she's saying, it's me, it's something, how it's complete, I can't even see my eyes. So you just be over there, maybe, maybe, uh, uh, like.
What do you think, I'm sorry?
Yeah, I'm gonna let you know, like, uh, what you send out, you didn't, like, what the bid package.
If it's awarded, the lower bidder comes back to say, you were.
So if you, but on that actual bid packet that was sent out, it has GPS coordinates of the debris removal locations. So that is what the bid should be responsive to, is removing the eleven locations of the debris. I don't know what that means, two miles?
He probably put that in write-off.
I don't know exactly what that means.
But it, it gone by the specs, what you just read, that's what they got to do.
Right, there's eleven debris removal locations.
It can be ten miles, it could be more miles, whatever debris and GPO, GPS locations.
Right.
That we gotta use. Understand that? Any further discussion? The coordinate and whatever you say in the level locations, who sent that in?
That was a survey, that's a survey that GIS did that FEMA is reimbursing us for.
Okay.
They went out and surveyed the canal and identified every piece of debris that needed to be.
Set down the canal, and that came out. There were, there were twenty-one pieces of stuff they had, and you can take it out.
It's eleven locations where seven, eight, ten years.
So.
We, we thought we was cleaning the whole freaking thing, I will say, and I give it.
Yeah.
Give it power, the whole freaking thing, from, from the back.
Right, it's just like in order, so like, one thing is tied to the way FEMA specifies the project. And so Tracy, Bryce, and I all sat down, specifications, and I just, we all agreed that I don't know that we can admit any more clearer. And there were eleven locations of debris removal that ha, cause it dictated how it has to be done, like, has to use this equipment, these are the staging areas, these are the, so like, if you were admitting something outside of that, then I don't know if the bid specifications were not read correctly, but I mean, the army corps of engineers approved a permit for this work to be done, so we have to operate within the permit, like, we don't have a choice.
And some of that money went to the survey.
Exactly, so there's not much.
We still above, the lower bid is still above what we had. I got it.
Correct.
So I'm wondering, can you look deep for that whole survey?
No, that came out of that money.
Okay, so I asked, I asked me, sixty thousand from FEMA, and y'all, y'all all agreed on thirty thousand from the town to give ninety thousand dollars for a survey, am I wrong or right?
I don't know how much was it. We spayed that?
So FEMA were, y'all needed to survey that canal.
Right.
FEMA was gonna grant sixty-seven thousand dollars.
Where did that survey?
And did, did y'all give thirty thousand dollars to be spent for that survey in that canal? We.
Wait, I'm a little, I have that contract.
So that's ninety thousand dollars, that was okay, just to survey that canal?
No.
The survey was about eighteen thousand, seven thousand, what, I don't know. The permitting was, not a sixteen thousand, might be the other way around. We got the money from the drainage district to do that, and we didn't know if FEMA was gonna pay for it, the drainage district gave the mon, the town the money. FEMA paid for some of it, and I talked to some of the drainage people, said, like, whatever FEMA doesn't think, and then you said, and I'm there. I will go back to the drainage district, they not said that name? Then you said, I'm screwed. So the town just taking it, okay, did it?
Not, not as of yet.
Not yet, but we okayed thirty thousand dollars at one point, ordinance.
We did.
And that was.
That survey, that permitting survey.
Right, so I'm like ninety thousand dollars for permitting and survey.
No, no.
Always service.
No, does, I'll share that the town member was thirty thousand.
No.
No, no.
To get the whole project was thirty thousand, like, including the debris removal. Permit and the location.
I'll give you that ninety thousand.
You, oh, and because you said it twice, they cannot, they cannot. We want to, we want to, but twenty thousand or twenty-five thousand, because somebody want to clean the canal. And two different meetings, you said, they cannot mobilize the equipment for twenty thousand or twenty-five thousand dollars. So at that point, not two or three meetings later, they okayed to put in thirty plus thousand dollars of the town much. And FEMA had sixty thousand, that was ninety thousand. And that was just survey.
No, no, I had a. So.
I mean, I, I, I can say exactly what. Yeah, but can I, can I say exactly what we paid GIS?
Yeah, well, that is.
The GIS contract, now this point in my email, not sign of the mayor, but it was signed of the GIS engineer, it was thirty-seven thousand six hundred eighty-five dollars. And if you would see the requirements that FEMA required on that survey, you would understand what a cost of it was.
Oh, my, of course.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, did the town spit a hint on that? We didn't, right?
I don't know.
The FEMA's gonna reimburse that stud, that, uh, that survey.
But with FEMA's paying for this project is inclusive of that reimbursement, so once you take that reimbursement out, you left with a very small number.
That, it only, but FEMA giving, long story short, but FEMA giving, don't have the front.
They said the scope of services included survey, recon, and permitting, so that it, that thirty, if it permits that of the permitting and the.
Right. Survey.
And the survey. Yeah. Which is not a survey that we really, really woke up one morning and said, I have to do my page, GIS engineer's forty thousand dollars for this survey, like, FEMA said, if you want the money, you better do this survey.
And I, I know, I know, I know exactly what you're saying, I'm just saying at one point, we okayed a whole bunch of survey. And, and the thing is, you had said, they can't bring the equipment out here, but they only have twenty-five thousand dollars, and that was like two separate meetings. It did not.
And, and you're right, it is expensive, I'm not saying you were, you were wrong. But if we, if the town had to come up with money, we should have maybe got probably great clean for twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, but they, they did.
But I know FEMA, you, you don't follow FEMA rules, you pull out the town, so.
I know, I, I would have taken the money for the permitting, and, well, we had to go to the permitting. What FEMA gives to clean the canal?
So, the total project itself.
So the total project itself is forty-eight thousand, seven hundred eighty-three dollars. And you gotta take the survey cost out of there. So you have a little over nineteen thousand dollars to clean the canal.
And like, I agree with you. You can't move your equipment in for twenty thousand dollars and clean it out. So it's gone.
So I mean, the town has to decide at some point how much you wanna put in to be able to get it cleaned. Cause FEMA's evidently not gonna give us what we need.
Well, that's not a lock line in the canal.
Yeah.
Well, that's not really the money. But again, it's so much more like you say, FEMA, if you want the money, you gotta.
Yeah, it's easy to sit there and say, it's a bunch of bullshit. But the thing is, when it all comes down to it, you gotta pay my roads.
Right, and, and they are gonna have an inspector on site for this project, FEMA will, that's gonna oversee all of the work.
Yeah.
So if, for example, additional dumpsters would be needed, cause they only allotted us two dumpsters for this project.
Yeah, that was crazy.
If additional dumpsters are needed, this on-site person is gonna be the one that's gonna be able to authorize that.
And that's good that they care because then it's.
They include two dumpsters in it. Two dumpsters and one dumpster.
Right, yeah.
You don't know what else is there.
Okay, uh, do you all want to take this uh, lively and uh, are you all gonna hold on?
I think it's too hot. I think we should re-bid it. But it's still too hot. I think we should put out the invasion.
That's, that's, that's your comments on it.
Yeah, it is. It's not a motion that's sick.
If you all want to move the roof, you need to make a motion. Move our roofs. Second, buddy, any further discussion? Good discussion there, what I think, uh, what you think? All right, there's a lot of discussion we've all enjoyed.
I'm gonna go with no, but I think it's still.
Kip.
I'm gonna go with yay, yes.
Willis, first, please.
I'm gonna go yes because our town with her keep seeing the drainage needs to be cleaned out and our people pay taxes to get their services. So we're gonna clean the drainage farm.
All right, yeah. Mine's out, the year's out. Okay, thank you. Senior citizen, Croweville, fifty percent rule request of obsessive testing completed before the second twenty-four. Obsessive from reading of FEMA for our project to develop. Never done back on that.
Sorry.
So, I'm a shell. It's unknown.
Um. The documentation was submitted, uh, the additional request that they had. We had our call last week and that's still under review.
All right. Showing tools, showing proof, past, showing proof, Bat House building combined into one project, possible alternate project. Absent, this test is completed on the fourth, second twenty-four, found near the Bat House. Signs are removed forward into FEMA's system. And uh, just like, just like this project. Think they only wanna give us two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Cause they want us to replaster in the areas that were damaged.
Uh, wanna replaster, uh, two eighty by eighteen, or twenty-four by twenty-four, or six by six. You know, so.
What, what, what y'all thinking it costs to just fill that in and make a, like they have a bike rule, there was a water spring, you don't need no life bars.
I looked into some splash bags. You wanna go with the water bill?
The kid, the kid love that.
No, the water bill is one of them. Like seven, eight thousand dollars.
Double that in the town, we could do a piss over.
There you go. Like.
They get something for the kid.
I don't.
The water, the water, the.
No.
The Ryu. I was there, you're gonna throw it for a million, you're gonna manage it, gotta get you some money.
That'd be my idea, close enough for another pavilion because our pavilion's always rented.
Well, I think the parish might help with that a little bit.
Put another pavilion there and make it rented.
Look into, do some, look into.
But we all live in a different office.
I know I mentioned it.
No, I, I love these splash bags too, but like.
Just wanted to mention it.
If there would be a way to recirculate the water in these splash bags.
I would look at the one in Bible, pick pictures up. That's, that's pretty, pretty neat. You got a fence and all, and you coat it down and stuff like that. So it's.
Probably so they have to pay a water bill case by present, but they don't win time. And I think it's automatically set to where it runs for so many minutes and then it shuts.
They got, they got some kind.
But we are looking like just getting different ideas.
Now, also. The thing is FEMA won't give us any money to call up that pool. We have to put back what they have. We don't get any FEMA.
Doesn't think it, it's a purpose.
Around the two hundred and fifty thousand, we're all over the pool, you two hundred and fifty thousand, do something else.
We, so part of this project is.
We all, we just not we it.
We, it's combined into one, the three different buildings. So we got money for the Bat House, we got money for the Pimp Pup Building, and we getting money for the pool. So it's all combined into one project and we're looking at an alternate project. So if we can get the approval on the alternate side, it's possible that we could do what we need.
Apparently, I redoing the pool, because you can't find the works.
Works.
Yeah.
That's why the last year I put open.
That's why I want to do that.
And I agree, it's hard, it's hard to keep something like that going. It's just how much that town money we have to use if we can use FEMA money.
Yeah.
This is gonna grow towards.
Maybe, maybe I'll do some research to see what it costs for their water bill. We're working on it with it. Maybe I can do some research to see what it costs for their water bill and buy it. Danny, do you know the parish kept them any cost of that?
Yeah, they're not even using that. Since the hurricane, the north. They're trying to figure out, to recycle the water and all this stuff, and it's very expensive.
Seven, six, seven of the water bills.
They're coming.
It, it did stay over the hall, okay?
It's still closed.
The last conversation I had with some more about it, a contractor that I built his name, he did this door. We're trying to find someone to work on. The ones you see elsewhere in other states that spring water and they run that, so it's, it's pumps, well water, so they don't have a bill to sell.
Basically.
And that's why you, you go elsewhere.
Everywhere.
There's, there are water.
The one in Gulf.
You can put a filter system. Recycle water. Then you got the chemicals.
Yeah.
I mean, if you get a computer, it's. It's playing the picture.
I know, I was there, I used to like to start to get wet, so I didn't look at that.
All right, we'll move on. Food Paris, Eric, and I recovered the money, five thousand, four seven thousand, deadline is six thirty. Okay, we see eleven thousand, uh, forty-two thousand, seven six cents, four to eight, one hundred and ninety-four thousand, three hundred and forty-five thousand, seven cents remaining. So we, we might not reach the two oh five, but we'll push as much as we can. I hope they give us an extension on the date.
And once some of these projects above can start being completed, that will be towards our fifty percent due us.
Our request bid, the second, the thirty-four, two thousand twenty-four, to repair the asphalt, redo the board, do say drive it. L A G A P application submitted on eleven thirteen, two thousand twenty-three, result expected July, August, two thousand twenty-four. A few things, it's clean and chief, I think we could.
Yes, we get used to the first and so forth.
I didn't. Tell you about Kip. Any further questions? How it's going on, Jody?
Hi.
Kip.
Sure. I was just wondering if they had found a problem with the fuel pipe or just some free thing they did.
Yeah. I'm thinking of. Eh, I bet. I was thinking one day it's, one day it's under fuel. I know like with diesel trucks, there's a, you're not gonna deal with my door here someday, or when diesel trucks, you can add an extra fuel filter, like external. Like, no, I'm getting out of on the vehicle.
On the vehicle.
On the vehicle, I'm thinking about something, you got like two, two filters. That would maybe be something to look at. I don't know, it'd be cheaper than some of the other options, you know what I'm saying? You can have one on the engine and you got one on the frame by tank, you know?
I guess, I guess.
Yeah, just to save.
Okay. Okay, Tom?
All right, the condemnation proceeds started with B C ten twenty-three. Uh, property has been condemned. The uh, demolition board has been granted to be in construction. And we are waiting for the execution and notice issued to the uh, to the demolition.
Was this today?
That's it, so, so that was.
So it's set for the fourteenth next week. So would Ben, uh, who said that he should be able to get it done on the fourteenth? So were they able to serve, uh, the chief handed off the notice to Kevin Frank to go try to service the bottle this evening? Cause he works in Grand Albert and days, but that Ad hoc attorney did receive it.
Thank you. Uh, B C ten twenty-nine, this property has been condemned. Extension was given to the owner to firm up the sale of the property. Uh, that extension ends on May twentieth, twenty twenty-four, so there's no action necessary on the side. Uh, B C ten thirty, this property is scheduled for condemnation here on May twentieth, twenty twenty-four, not actually necessary on the side. Uh, B C ten thirty-two, this property has been condemned. The extension to, uh, the model to repair the structure was given to the owner. That expires on May twentieth, twenty twenty-four, no action necessary on the side. Uh, B C ten thirty-three, uh, the property was condemned. The owner has until May twentieth, twenty twenty-four to demo or repair the property. And no action necessary on the side. B C ten thirty-six, this property was condemned. The owner has until May twentieth, twenty twenty-four to the model to repair. Uh, the sharper amount of action is necessary on the side. Uh, B C ten thirty-eight, uh, this property is scheduled on the date here on May twentieth, twenty twenty-four. There's no action necessary on the side. Uh, B C ten forty, this property has been condemned. The extension has been given to the owner until May twentieth, twenty.
I got, I got a question. You don't, you don't know that this, he started taking the panels off. Actually, all the panels off. It's been working. It was not your back reason.
So, uh, there's no action necessary on the side. Uh, B C ten forty-one, uh, this property has been condemned. The owner has until May twenty, twenty twenty-four to repair. Uh, or the model, the structure, no action necessary on the side.
I did talk to him, he said he's gonna use them, but it was a very good.
Oh, the one that.
Well, the building, the building is down. Yeah. It's not to the twenty, go ahead.
Yeah.
So B C ten forty-four, we have an update on the property by our C P O. Uh, I'll see you. The follow-up inspection from uh, four fifteen to point four, the change of dates and satisfaction is our condition to continue the confirmation. So here, the, the capital could consider uh, requesting a demolition bids. You know?
Perfect. Yeah, it's a condemnation order, would you issue it? And they had ten days to repair the knowledge. So if they not, according to Joe, then the recommendation that stop the planning would be that we go after the next meeting. Um, to move forward with that challenge.
Okay.
I'm.
Who's on this?
Say.
Say about Kip?
That was wrong, Jody.
Hi.
Kip.
Uh.
If you face it.
I.
Mike.
Um, the next item is B C ten forty-six. Uh, this property has been condemned. And we have an update for our C P O, from our C P O.
Yep.
Uh, for this property. Follow-up inspection from four one to twenty-four, no changes been made since that inspection. Is our condition to continue the confirmation.
I, I did see him over there, the other way. Going around the field, I don't know. Bringing a two bubble or something.
So we, we have to bid.
We have to bid. One deal. One.
Who, 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 who sent the kids, second buddy, he's got a question. Mark, how long they give the, the, before they, they got notified of that, of the bill?
Yes.
Like you're like in fourteen days or thirty days.
We're trying to get it out as soon as possible. Just the right number. We try usually at least ten days though. To let them know that if there's any things they need to have removed from there, they need to do that within a certain amount of time. So we get with the contractor to find out what day the contractor finds a hole to make sure like they have to have notice to them.
Okay, we'll move on, Jody, uh, Kip, uh, Willis, please.
I.
Mind that. Uh, the next item is ten forty-eight. Uh, this property is up for condemnation here on May twentieth. Twenty twenty-four, so there's no action necessary on the side.
So that's my place. Um, that's why I'm here. So I just wanted y'all to know that, um, so for the hurricane, I lost four in places. And I'm so glad that it's out. I wanna go to that because, um, we're only two people. We can only do so much.
I'm sorry, do it that way.
Yeah. Like a dad.
We're trying to do a better community, sorry.
Hmm?
We're just trying to do a better community.
Yeah, I know, but. We can, we can only do so much. Um, and that's at least why we turned right now. We're losing our house and we have to move. So an eyesore of a shade, I mean, that's the bottom of my list right now. And I understand y'all wanted, you know, y'all wanted to look all pretty, but maybe have a little compassion for other people who didn't get, you know? Who has, who didn't have the opportunity to have insurance and have everything they were and FEMA to come in and take everything, you know? Not everybody's in your shoes. I mean, we have already places we lost, that was our intention. So we can only do so much. So I don't know what we all wanna do, but you know, we put a new roof on it. It's not in anybody's, it's not danger to anybody, it's boarded up. So, I mean, yeah, have to give us time. We just can't do it all.
What is, um, so if you have the, the.
I didn't know it's a.
condemnation here is that if they go make money and go back, there's our, go there official will go out there, reevaluate the property for the next council meeting. And uh, he'll, you know, he'll give his opinion if the new roof has satisfied those minimum requirements. Uh, necessary to sort of pull it off of the condemnation side of things, you know, if you have report, but you know, it's, it's certainly not up for debate or discussion tonight.
Okay. Well, good.
This is the council that.
It's not the.
The next meeting, they look like they have a new roof, cause they, you know, we have a board.
They've been having a new roof and it is boarded up, just because they're like, I believe, I'm sorry.
The pictures I got.
Oh, it's boarded up.
I go, I go, I go, I go.
Well, the building. Really expected, I'm sure council is gonna give you time, the building's expected, everybody look at it, okay, miss?
We have given everybody time that has come here and asked for time. Everybody has walked in this building and asked for time. We have granted it to them. So don't come and start throwing shade at us that we're gonna give you time if you ask for it. We will.
What is that on their condemnation? So to me, to me, you carry it down.
Because we have to move forward to have our feet in the right motion. If things aren't done or you don't come to acknowledge that you're at least trying. I understand that you don't care about water, but we care about water. That's what we gotta pay to do right here is protect our people and serve our people and go together and get our ground back to where it needs to be. So I'm not in your shoes and you're not in my shoes. I don't wanna be anywhere near you, Mark. Thank you.
All right, uh, the next one up is B C ten fifty-one. Uh, this property was scheduled with the Ad hoc attorney for the condemnation here tonight, but uh, we are requesting that. All right, uh, the next one up is, uh, B C ten fifty-one, uh, this property was scheduled with the ad hoc attorney for the condemnation here tonight, but, uh, we are requesting that it.
Miss, stand with me.
You just did, just did. This, I'm sorry, my, uh, I thought. So, so this property has been condemned, uh, on B C ten fifty, uh, there has been a condemnation order issued, uh, the property has until May twenty, twenty twenty-four. To make, uh, to make the very demolition of the property, so on next meeting, we'll, uh, have an update for the council, when the condition. All right, uh, B C ten fifty-one, uh, so, it was scheduled for this evening, a condemnation here with the attorney ad hoc, uh, but, uh, through the circumstances. The, uh, way the ad hoc attorney's requesting that this specific agenda item be postponed and reset for next meeting for May twentieth. Um, so, uh, the next item is B C ten fifty-eight. Uh, this condemnation here is actually set for June third, twenty twenty-four, uh, versus the seventeenth, we were. Going, so it is reset, it is set for June third, twenty twenty-four.
They, but what is, but what is where, that's all on the ground, from what the pictures and all books, it's in the process of being torn down.
Okay.
Torn down, this needs to be.
Yeah, uh, the real, my, you know, we think it's.
It's a scrap metal guy that's tore it down, that's gone with the owners.
Yeah.
Anthony Goldsmith, I thought he had contacted us. He, he left the message for the mayor, Anthony Goldsmith.
Travis, Travis Shaw is the guy that knocked it down.
He's the, one of the grandkids of the owner, and that he was working with getting it resolved, and it should be completed before the condemnation hearing, so.
He did that to his word so far.
All right, the next agenda item is B C ten sixty-two, uh, this property has been condemned, our C P O does have an update on the condition of property.
Yes, that's, that's.
He doesn't have.
So, maybe the boards can take it up the agenda. Move on, Willis.
Thank you.
Second by Kip, any further question? We're on, Joey.
All right.
Yeah, uh, Willis. Lacy.
Um.
Max out.
Well, that's it for all of this.
All right, Tom, thank you.
I want the B C ten twenty-three, Christina Bowles and Charles Bowles have been served.
That's perfect.
Oops, all right, we would have considered authorizing the merit that FEMA can just agree more, do more reporting, and better pick up, uh, with the E D, E D. With that easy.
Say.
What, Kip?
Uh.
All, move on, Joey.
All right.
Kip.
All right.
Willis. I think. Mike, uh. I would consider approving, uh, for your very best, if you threw up, we on it, scattered on various areas, twenty-second and twenty-five, in the motion. Move on, Lisa.
Say.
Say about Kip, any question, going on, Joey?
All right.
Kip.
All right.
Willis. All right, Lacy.
Aye.
Max out. Council, council considers approving for a, for a, for a, for the Irish Italian parade scheduled for March twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four.
Cool.
Move on, Willis.
Thank you.
Move on, Lisa, any questions? Now we go on, Joey.
All right.
Kip.
All right.
Willis. Lacy.
Aye.
Max out. Council consider approving the hipper budget to actual financial, everybody had a copy, the motion did accept, you have food. Move, move on, Kip.
Say.
Second by Willis. Any further question, move on, Willis.
All right.
Kip.
All right.
Lacy. Max out. Consider, uh, I would consider authorizing the merit proceeding, cutting between behind the D M V. Okay, we've been having the year to years, it's all pre behind the D M V right here, it's area of our building. And how pre we have, maximum the cost, uh, I've got. We ain't got, I mean, I've got some pool. He can read a lot, I want to.
And the, the problem.
Yeah, right.
The problem. Why?
The problem you come to the D M V, which, I don't know, there's.
Joey, you can, uh, you can settle up, can you, can you?
Uh.
Not a great help.
Okay. Let's say, you know, we could, you know, we could.
Take all the mess that you came to, I thought I was.
Cut, okay, cut the trim, I'll see twenty-one thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. B T P general contractors, twenty-three thousand six hundred dollars. S B L, uh, construction, twenty thousand one hundred seventeen thousand fifty cents. S B, uh, S B L, the cheapest ones, uh, the language to report with, I mean, of course. Also made by Willis.
Thank you.
Second by Kip, any further discussion? Move on, Joey.
All right.
Kip.
All right.
Willis. Lacy.
Aye.
Mike. Excellent. Condemnation proceedings, suspension planning.
Okay, uh, next item is B C ten thirty-four, uh, it is scheduled for condemnation here, however, we don't have good service on it, but I'm told, uh, our C P O has a, an update.
So, the building has been torn down, there's still some material and two dumpsters on site, I talked to the guys over out there, said that all should be gone by the end of this.
Okay. I'm believing in, was, was this a castle? Is that?
To be finished, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, they, so.
Building itself is gone, right?
Building, right, so we dumped this a bowl, and they were cutting up, built a trailer, so they were cutting up the frame, but it's all off, they said they shut everything up by the end of the week, but we don't. Close it out on our end, and build everything from the property, that's what I'm going to do.
How long we taking it off?
What should we go, we need to mark that, yeah?
Uh. Second.
Okay. Move on, Joey, any question?
Wait, were you removing it already, or?
Yeah.
Before it's completed?
Well, it is completed, it's such in the dump, that you've got a whole dump along, right?
Yeah, and the frame's gonna be.
The dump, the frame, that you.
And we're not saying, uh, we're not saying that, don't approve, don't follow, everything's all.
Yes.
I mean, we, we did, you said, again, for the next agenda, you did not pay the cost where it is.
Yeah, it's just, the, the inspection report doesn't get passed technically until the, the, the free group for the property, but, I mean, I can come down, so, uh, they just need to, just no checking, right?
Okay. Which is the council, we have, we have a motion in the second.
If, uh, if I'm, if, when you tell my, we have to, we have to follow, I'd like to take a mutual.
But we. What is, uh, you're saying, it's like, well, my, it's, it's, it don't, I'm hard on my. Well, we do, it's very body, you know?
That's good, yeah.
You're the right one.
That's right.
Okay, uh, any other things we brought up for the council? There's a trap, they, they, they're picking up slope, and I gotta stay on, man. Guys, so, I mean, that just stays off. There is this move, they're picking up, I'm seeing them around.
They were picking up the deep.
Yeah, but all around.
No, what they did, they do, but it's the.
Anybody, anybody, any comments? Mark.
Yeah, we did a great job, keep it up.
Thank you, sir.
I don't know if y'all can just predict, y'all, the fire, this you could turn it off, it's hosting a seminar, all boards and commission members.
Yes. Yeah, it's, it's, uh, open meetings, public records, and public good laws, I just wanted to let y'all know, it's, it's, they, they're not. It's, uh, yeah, go, go. So, six, you see the clock in, raise, or whatever, it's all.
All right.
Just like, I, I'm telling you.
Just, uh, I'll make an announcement, the, for Bush concert events, we'll be moving our, we'll be in the party event, this Saturday from ten to seven, uh, three bands. Sure, sure shopping, a lot of breaks to drink, to not have your finals.
All right, I'll pay you.
Big, no. Yo, we, we're seeing a lot of activities at four, they, it's been, been a good day, a lot of people showing up.
It's really nice.
All right, there's another thing to bring up, the important thing, go to me, about Willis, second by Willis, all four, I will, there's.